Some guy come up to her and handed her a T-shirt that said, "Noam DeSantis 2024." She's like, "Why not me?"
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Smack your head, do you see? Any additions or corrections to the minutes of our August 10th meeting?
Not me.
Is there a motion to approve? Johnson, second by Regal, any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Any public comments, made one?
Crow and I down there and talked to Jerry, they're still working with the state, the federal, they've been working all summer on that grainy thing for the grant what Peterson's been talking about. And then, which didn't work time, he just said, "Brad, I was a wiretomb now, did not listen to it, have a fire because of so much stuff coming on the radio from the highway department." And I said, "Well, we have natural fire."
Anything else? Welcome Dylan, do you have anything exciting for us today?
So far as the dispatch contract with the city, I understand you guys might add a little hesitancy with what the city wanted.
They were adding a paragraph?
Yeah.
I don't know if you quite adjust to what that paragraph was supposed to be.
Yeah, Don sent it over to me. Legal wise, there's nothing wrong with it. I guess it would be, if you guys are concerned about it, talking to Tyler about what his plan is, concerning that, but from an legal standpoint, it doesn't really... Because I know Tyler's doing that already.
He is. There still is an out clause in the contract if either party decides to leave. That's what I had to say.
Second thing, I know I just made the request last week and you guys have another month or so, or whatever it is, to have a finalized budget. But I appreciate to know if there's a decision made on requests online as soon as it's, I don't want to say finalized, but pretty sure.
Sure.
So I have a chance to get signed up for on-campus interviews with the law school or to study, gain some interest among any interested parties. Sooner I can start talking to somebody, easier that process can go.
Do you have the, there's more budget today, that part? Before the end of the day, we'll be able to give you that answer.
I appreciate it. I had one question, I know you want a full-time person, I understand that probably the better way to go, but you express some uncertainty about whether you're able to hire anybody. Would, who would be to advertise for part-time up to full-time, you know, and maybe find some people in between that were maybe got a practice that, you know, needs something a little more steady coming in? So would you use part-time work or no, or?
Well, the issue I see is the fact that there's more than enough work to have someone.
Well, I'd say, if you get it, if you get it, I find if you couldn't, it's a possibility someone else might be interested in doing it, even on the part-time, or?
If I wanted to issues with finding a full-time person for an extended period of time, then I'll change tactics, you know, to something like that, right? Have another body in there, you know, that's just on a part-time basis.
You suggest that we might not be able to find anybody?
Yeah.
Right. And I guess I just wanted to cover on the chance that I would find someone and it would be before January 1st. I know my, my budget for my office this year had still been fifty-five K or whatever, I was scheduled to make as a deputy, including yet. And I believe the only things, the only thing that's been taken out of that so far is what's been paid K for the stuff that she's helped. Will there be an issue if for some reason I wasn't able to find someone before the end of the year, hiring them on, I think it would look like I don't have money inside my budget this year.
Do you know the amount of surplus that he's running on his budget? I mean, I'm not questioning him, but is it ten thousand, is it twenty thousand, is it thirty thousand? I guess that's what we need to, we need to get a handle on.
But assuming the money's there, it'd be an issue?
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be a problem, Dylan, that'd be a problem at all.
Apart from that, it's actually been somewhat, it's been slowly, but comparatively. But comparatively here, a slow week is still continuing on the budget as well. As far as anything else, I, oh, the ninth of September, can I have a hearing on the promotion matter? Well, you guys know how that goes from the comments, so you know the hearing's coming up during the next month.
And I guess we've had so much stuff going on, I can't remember specifically, but I may mind.
It says appeal from this year.
That was filed late, did you see that?
He moved your vote. Yeah, he didn't serve anybody, he starts with, or alleging our motion to dismiss.
So if that goes away, the plan would just?
Other than that, any other questions to me this morning? You guys have a good day?
You do.
Do you want to talk to us about the quiet title action for Clo City?
First, I have to explain to you what a quiet title is.
Is that same as a quick?
We'll be quiet.
Well, when I look, look at the property, it's, it's, um, it's on Lane, if you want. I mean, it's Lane and Barbara Flatlin and Dick and Sandra Wolf. Lane's deceased and so is dead. So I think it's just a cleanup of something that board the Andersons offices have.
Why do they call it quiet? I've never heard that term before.
Quiet title?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Doesn't a quiet title, um, it was advertised in the paper.
But he was a defendant?
It's a tax title.
Does it require any challenges against the title?
So?
It's just a, it's just a cleanup, you're going to be, any challenges that could be there. That's what it says on, I'm there, man. Says, "Action requires title to a lawsuit law and a court having jurisdiction of property disputes or two steps, a party's title to a real property or virtual property, having a title against anyone and everyone, thus, apply any challenges or claims to the title."
I guess, so you're saying someone's name might have been on that title, now they're deceased, so he says, so it's cleaned up?
And Lane, Lane and Dick are both deceased. Lane's been gone for a long time, so, and Dick just passed away.
Well, it seems like it's only be cleaned up in four weeks, but it's easier to have it cleaned up.
Well, and Barbara's still alive and so Sandy, so.
Yeah, we're just going to get rid of this thing and then you can jump in. Need a motion to authorize signature of the quiet title action, Carlson, second by Regal. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Are you ready to respond?
I am, I am, Subrdin 301. Um, section 302, per pivotal uses, we have per pivotal uses in our ordinance already. And so the only thing that we're adjusting is adding that special permitted use for the word add. So this underline is what we're adding. Here, be it retained, all, I think everything else is right. And then under number seven, underneath the 302, we're adding number seven. If you look at the 302 section. It's going to be number seven, it's going to be our next one underneath it. And that should say subject to section 1644 as based on developed earlier. The reason I chose 1643 is if I looked in my beginning table of contents, 1643 is not in here, which it's a penultimate, when first district did, uh, or did our reordance, when he reprinted it, so. He, we came, I mean, this is what he did, so it's... So anyways, so it's, and that's why we sent it out for review, it's not been publicized yet, everything is good, we can go ahead and change that to 1644. With then looking back at the back page, here is that, 1644. And then so, then that goes and talks about everything. We have the county show, no up to two, the plan in place, all of that. We're at a thousand feet back, remember the thousand feet we give? And then we are a thousand feet from public or private school. A thousand feet from a true residence, licensed daycare facility, or another cannabis establishment. Are we missing anything else? And then all the definitions, when we get this approved and it goes through the whole process, then the different definitions will just fall into place alphabetically in all with our definitions. With this, I will make the change and I will make sure Don has the corrected updated version of this. Other than that, I think we're good to go unless he has any other questions. But that was the reason why I had chose what I did. So ordinance number three one, will be corrected, show that, okay. Ordinance number thirty-two. Can we just discuss that a little bit? And I'm moving an article in at eleven. Section B. What it's talking about is the license, they suspend their license. They, and the process is to dispute, uh, for ten days, you know, we send a notice, blah, blah, blah. He requested hearing before a hearing panel. What I'm taking issue with is the hearing panel, which will consist of the county commissioner, chairperson, and auditor, the sheriff, and state's attorney. Which maybe would be okay, but then if, you know, they have come back with an appeal, Article 12, the appeal will be considered by the county, board of county commissioners. My question is, I feel like if we, if the board is not part of the hearing, initial hearing, and not privy to everything, why are we then part of the appeal process?
The board is a part of the hearing.
It doesn't, no.
Yeah, county commissioner?
No, it says, it says, which will consist of the county commission, chairperson.
Okay, well then those change into county commissioner.
No, but that's my question is, if the rest of the group feels it should be the entire board and not just the chairperson hearing, the hearing. And then if you put on here, it's the entire board, we're hearing the appeal.
If you don't like the answer, you're taking the next level, it's the same people.
Because the first board would be the chairperson, the sheriff, the state's attorney.
Right. So if, if you didn't like the decision, then you feel it's the next level, but if the board of commissioners was all on that first one, how could you?
They, they find it against them, then you can still feel it.
Right.
So they can't be part of it.
It'd be redundant, that's what I'm saying. So then we accurate all the information again, it's going to be a different group of people. The ears hearing.
Good point, all right, I have no issue with ordinance number thirty-two yet. You know?
Did it? Okay.
I'll make the trigger.
Flat resolution, we need a motion to approve. Regal, second by Carlson, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Why would you not? I, I had section thirty-three, I would still, why would you not?
That's pretty darn good for a township, there's so much reliance there.
Absolutely, she's got thirty-nine, I think that's a lot of responsibility. Ultimately, it falls on, on the administration.
That would be okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight, I would supply with the possibility.
About twenty-four over one person.
We need, we're not very important.
But then the other part of the time we're discussing.
I think she should have been sitting.
Hope that won't be here.
Co-legal managers. She would like anyhow. I think maybe she should, she should be here for a while, maybe she should let him come to the meeting.
Well, I think, I think the issue is, you know, relying on first. Not pay attention to what is due, so far what is due.
Well, we heard today, this is what Luke said, this is what Johnson said.
That's my...
Yeah, I mean, you can ask a question such a fashion as like, we are, but she doesn't, again, it's like, it's a...
I'm going to say why you're trying to stop him, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's his, I didn't say open till, still, you have to tell them. I've been out for a couple of weeks, I've been out for a couple of weeks, I don't know if it's not that hard. You know, I haven't worn my paper, I haven't seen your ads for this after, I've seen them, they're dry.
I mean, I think she puts it off the line. This is what paper, you run in paper ads, shopper and, you know, the one. When people read those newspaper, that's old people.
Well, you have young people that you talk to, don't you?
Yeah. We talked a bit about watercolor, did you get that? That, that paper is so thin, you can barely, it's like full tissue paper. Really, it's like, try to read newspaper like this and it falls down. They're ruining that newspaper. Look right through it, it is, I've never seen paper so...
What, that wiretomb paper?
Yeah. Really getting bad. What would you guess the watercolor paper is?
I'd say probably twenty-four, seventy-four.
Okay, is this mine?
That's the new one.
That's the new one? Yeah, it's tough to read.
The weed supervisor position, we have?
Yeah.
Did you get a chance to skim through it?
We had one comment in the past, in that section where it talks about, you know, commercial licenses, a general test, a herbicide test, a roadway test, blah, blah, blah. That might scare people off, how much would you say you have to take certification tests? It's just like, otherwise you look at that and think, oh my God, I'm going to be studying for a month to pass these tests, you have to say certification tests, make them say, wow, okay.
So are they required?
Required certification tests or something like that, yeah.
And how do you, how do you feel about advertising instead of putting an end date on it, open until filled?
Yeah.
Make those adjustments, Don?
Required certification tests, you said?
Yeah, something to that effect. Well, if you get your application in early, Tim, we can hold it up real quick. I believe you already certified it, I understand.
Okay, the only thing that I have a question on, open until filled. So, you're going to take the first person that comes, or?
No, that's, that's not filled though, they actually interview and make selections.
That's what the downside is, that some of the lies and go hire them.
Oh, okay, obviously, you might sit for a month and a half.
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's, I don't...
Well, you just might say, well, let's wait and see if we get somewhere out. You might not get any for three months, work on sitting there saying, well.
I guess I'm hoping, I'm hoping you might have to get more time to try and see you guys.
This is only one position where like, at the jail, you have, you know, you've got so many positions that, I don't know.
I guess, I mean, yeah, you can just reopen it every time you want, I guess. That's fine too.
Okay, so you got September 10th down?
I can have it.
I think we need to do that, because it won't come out, it's going to next week, it's going to be perfectly out.
But again, just...
So that would be, oh, that would be a hard one to apply, right?
Yeah.
Try it, you have enough money, you worry yours or something like that? Someone said there, pizza club member grabbed $2,000 recently from COVID monies. I heard they're getting like $500 for the shot certificate.
They got $100 Walmart gift cards here the other day.
They did, yes, so there'd be a lot of people that don't want to work. We're going to have a tough time out to jail, I know.
So what do you do, I mean?
Plus you have it right to agency the other day, where I think they're going to put to jail, there's no work being done, so obviously change it. So that's, that's going to be around for a while. That didn't sound good. Did you give them any bids? We have five bids?
One?
Just that one, you can major place?
Yes.
Same guy as always?
Well, he, he let it go last year, did he, and he just, he stopped it? Did the other guy just retire?
Okay, so you're, on, on weed supervisor, you're good with the, the, right now?
Travis, three missed bids, 175 dollars an acre. One seventy-five. We've got thirty-eight, one six, one acres, so it's got it calculated out here, $6,756.75. Would be paid November 1st in full for the future year.
That's a three-year deal?
Yes.
I'm making a motion. Yeah, you go, move on.
Would my example to approve the bid, second by Carlson?
Paid in full November 1st, well, what more do you?
There's twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four years left? All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Nothing upfront, all at the end. What is the way to fight November? Okay, okay, even, okay, I love it. Even better yet, yeah.
Who mentioned that again? Twelve-thirty? We should be done well before that, what we think you're going? Water towns. I need a motion for executive session to discuss personnel. For Gil, second by Zep, all in favor, signify the same.
Aye, aye.
We carry.
That's your whole character.
Hmm?
That's your whole character.
Yeah.
You're going to scare up their hill scrapers, I would think, after a while. I wouldn't go up there.
There's a lot of good stuff, but they seem the ones that hit it, they really hit it, huh?
You may exactly have five.
Five? I wonder if they want to buy a sixth one.
You got one?
Yep, it's sitting out. Did he go look at it? What'd he say about?
I said, why, you want to buy that? What do you want?
Well, usually they would date much.
Yeah, we should negotiate a deal with them, figure out what that thing is in the ballpark.
What did you say with manor that he's there?
Rear drive, back engine, rear axle. I had carries out of it or something.
Punking kind of?
Yeah, I think so, something like.
Sounds expensive.
They can go within your heart of it. Or they just pull one axle out, so free run, this is the front engine. Well, one of the reasons I'm here is that road going up to the new garden cell. Okay. I just tried to do that six day. This is the garden cell right here. This is my road going over to it. It comes up here and it's still going uphill, 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 ass. We've got to be solidified, so. What I would like to see done, as long as we got base here and that road right here, that area right here, it does this a little bit sway back, they come here. So what I'd like to do is add my bases there, raise this road. So it comes up a little bit more like this, so I can build a platform here for my truck to turn down and get in there. Because right now they're almost driving people back in before they try to turn back into that garden cell there. And they're still going uphill when they get my corner. So if I could raise that road up and get a little platform built right there between the wall and garden cell and that road, they can be filled in, then I'd have a little platform there to do things with. But to do that, I would have to have Larry, and I can't tell you how much, because Larry would know, he's going to have to come up and survey it, because they do it by the yard. How many yards do you take them to move there? So that's what I need to wonder if this is something I could possibly look into and have Larry come up and have surveyed, but pay a price.
If you don't want them to touch them, gets rainy or snowy, I used to go on, slide.
It's all the way uphill, all the way up there, so you can get right to the corner. Then she starts to fly them up, all the way to the south.
And then something like Bates could do a lot of the here.
Yeah, I mean, is it like a $10,000 or a $50,000 deal or diamond? I can't even guess.
I can't even guess. I would, I would say it would be fifty, you know, but.
But more than ten?
Probably more than ten.
My opinion, just survey and price them.
Can we talk to the contractor about what your plan is and have him?
Yeah.
Give you a ballpark bigger.
Mark will wear, that name, Mark, that just talked about that manhole and talked about how we're going to get trucks in there and stuff. See, we don't have to put that body there.
Okay. Is that the kind of thing you could apply for some kind of grant to or not?
Uh, I don't know, like, like this, it should be with, this, you finish with this one.
Yeah, I should think somebody got to get down to a safety standpoint, because you got a little guy sliding down the hill there.
I did look into fencing. I talked to that Travis Bruce, we talked to.
Chris Ream?
Yeah, Faith. And right now there is no, that welded wire, that two inch by four inch wire became available. You know, you can roll here or roll there, that's to a thousand feet, ten foot high or eight foot high, he said that. Chain link is already available. We can get that in time. But with labor, posts, fencing, you're going $30,000. Go around that thing.
So you got the stuff with the fresh, you're right.
So was that part of putting the grass in there?
Nope. Um, we can probably get woven wire, and that's like forty cents a foot, but it's only a forty-two inch high fence, so we got probably three highs, so you're talking a dollar, twenty foot, twenty-five minutes a foot. But then, that's holes up there.
Grab a little too there.
I'll keep looking, I'll see what I find, that's right, this is a ballpark, if you were kind of looking at.
How soon do you need to make a decision?
Well, probably before the ground bees, because I think posts will be gone.
Does it? Can you, can you put the post in first and then the fence later, or the post has to match whatever fence you're putting in?
Yeah, I kind of.
I mean, push it, push it, shove it, but you can get the post in.
Right.
But you put the post in, can you come back and put chain link to it or woven or whatever?
It's going to be that, well, this Travis Bruce, he said, well, use a well pipe and one in wood, the well pipe, the wood and well pipe. Now they can hang it on the well pipe and gas it in the wood, and it'd be a lot stronger that way, with the well pipe there. But if he uses well pipe, he definitely go a hanger on it. So it came right there, so he didn't know where the hangers got to go. There would be downfall there.
Wood, would that block?
Not, not, only tiny, yeah.
But your cell will be filled up.
Well, and I'd wait, far away from that cell.
Well, we get till things freeze, and hopefully that's several months.
Yeah. Uh, so I will just wish that Larry would be up for it.
Yeah, I'll see where to do that. Where they would walk, obviously, they're going to be out there then.
Well, they still got the two foot play liner to put on, you know, the log, they still got the pipe on from the manhole over to the pond, getting the swing, spillway to be poured.
You're going to have to come back.
How about those movable tents?
He's got, he's got four sections out there for us right now.
And the pressure washer, did that gift deliver?
Andrew, Andrew, he said, he gave me text, he called him a few days ago. It's a trial.
Don put this on my desk here. This is the permit that got renewed for.
Yeah, yeah. They're divided years now.
Point of information, yeah, good until 2026.
Yeah, the only difference between this permit and that permit is they want me to orbit cover on by constructional stuff. What do you want, Jamie, do I have to hear what? I'm in the meeting here, please sir. Okay, I'll do it.
Any luck on a scale operator?
Yeah, unfortunately, I took one away from jail.
Oh.
Gail will be.
So she realizes that her wages only last.
Yeah, yeah. I showed her all this. Also, she just looked at it. She said, well, I get to keep my, I'll give you my insurance and my vacation and all that, okay. Well, yeah, she's in her later fifties. I have to start slowing down a little bit.
Sure. Well, they can be much slower than that, doesn't it? They can be much slower than that.
Where, where did she work?
She works at Correctional. She'll be getting $2.66 per hour. And then no overtime.
Will it start with?
I think it's a thirty, if she'd be a woman or older, she said she would, thirty would be the, um, pay period change.
Well, they got off on the 25th, our jails, but if we have to.
We have paid period, so. We spent more to start the thirty.
We all, we all cut off here. Well, we'll figure it out, if she works at the jail, we'll have to give her the $2.66 more per hour and then back at home. We can handle it.
Look, I hear commission number, run over Larry's back.
Go for it, huh?
All right, thanks, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
I'm disappointed. I mean, you're having to build, you know, that you have a name and so forth, and all this like piece meeting, you know, natural connection and. You know, I mean, everybody's side was going to be so this land pad, I mean, all should have been done, you know, looking for that stuff a year ago.
Well, and we've paid for the survey once already on designing that cell.
Yeah.
So now we're going to have another.
Yeah, I thought that might have been a disagreement. Oh, yeah, but I mean, but even the platform, you don't.
Motat today. Joe, are they coming in? Quarter to. Market, market.
Downstairs, we're looking this.
Thought occurred to me to have all three of them come in at the same time. Thought occurred to me to have all three of them come in at the same time and have this conversation. Who's T two? Hey, hi, Mark.
Going to make the tower here?
Don, yeah, we should just hold off, it'll be up in just a couple minutes.
I'll get a new contract written again.
Okay, Mark, thanks for coming in and giving us an update on how things are coming with the delinquents list, tax list that you have there.
So just at this point, we have not done anything as far as properties and going after them, other than we sent a letter out reminding those that had prior year balances, anything that was. Probably two or three years beyond the current year.
Okay.
So, and we just sent letters for that situation in July. From that. We collected approximately just under $40,000. Although there are a few of those, I know at least. Two or three were sale of the properties, so that would have most likely happened whether we sent the letter or not. We're running approximately fifty, fifty-five thousand a month in taxes between July and August so far. From August first to August 16th, as of yesterday, we collected forty, fifty-two thousand. Thirty-one of that was for current year taxes, so it's not as large as it looks or sounds, but.
So the fifty-two isn't all delinquent?
No.
That's what you're saying?
Correct. Thirty-one thousand of that is current year.
So twenty million is as a result of the letters, is that what?
More or less, I can't guarantee that that's what it's from. Some of it could have been, but it's, like I said, some were property sales.
Yeah, okay.
So.
And the letter just basically said you're in arrears, time to pay up or?
It was just our, it was basically just our, our regular statement that we would send out in October or January, whenever we send those out. We just happened to. In the past, Debbie had said that we don't. In the past, Debbie had said that we don't send out the April reminder, the May reminder, that they didn't pay their tax because a lot of farmers don't pay until second half, and they got a lot of calls saying that. So we have not done that. So we actually just heard there were some COVID money flying, so we sent a lot.
Yeah.
We had a lot of that. We, we attempted to collect some, so. So between July 1st and August, we collected just under 40,000 for prior years. That's where that was sitting. So for this year total, general taxes, we've collected 8,940,000. Of that 8, 800,000 is current year. So approximately 107,000 is, or 136,000 is prior years. That's for this year so far. And as far as motor vehicle side of our office, we're, we're running about 250 to 300,000 a month.
What's the plan going forward then? Because you did get, you did get some response from the letters that you sent out. Now the people that didn't respond to the letter, what, what's the plan for that?
So right now, Dylan and I have discussed it to see what we need to do and have a policy and procedures set up for that. Since he's new, Tyler's new, I'm very many, we're trying to determine what needs to be done and how.
Okay.
So at this point, there are some properties that could be attempted to, but in order to do that, I want to have everything in place before we start doing that. I do know that I've talked with other comms and other options, they do that between June and October, when they do the collecting.
Don's been around a couple of years or two. Did you, have you any input on that, on that procedure for them at all?
No.
Hadn't been involved much with that.
No, Debbie's, you know, their office always handled that.
Well, we'll mention that to Tyler and Dylan as well. And if we had some idea of the number that you're working with, that would be helpful too. Number of units, whatever, and if you don't have it today, that's.
I don't have that number, there are, there are, I've had contact with a few of our regulars that are large sizes on here. I have one on here that we've gotten letters back from them every single year we've sent a letter out, we cannot scan them. Office downstairs, so. Gets an anchor out in the pasture, so. Who do you contact, I mean? So we've gotten the letters back, we'll just have to run that one through a process of attempting to collect.
So the letter back is non-deliverable or recused, or what is it?
Non-deliverable.
Okay.
So. We've attempted, we've got a stack of them for that one, so. So that one might be one that we would start with, to see what we can do and attempt on it. I hear there was a current priority or one that has capacity that might have, so she was coming up with it, so. Dylan was actually looking into that to see where, where we're at, because that one was going through bankruptcy also. Like in situations of bankruptcy, depending on how it's written. If those that I've read, if they go bankrupt, current year and continuous going forward are supposed to be kept current. Well, this year we sent a letter out on it and we got all of their tax statements back with the letter, so.
No money.
Anything, anything else for Mark? Well, thanks for the update, Mark.
Thank you. It's one of these where it's kind of false, if you're not gonna like.
Okay. Except, except for that one.
No.
There's a motion by example to pay bills.
Oh.
All in favor, say what I'm saying. Bills are paid.
And I know one that was deceased and bankruptcy up in your area.
Oh, recently?
Yeah. Yeah. We've had a lot of issues with anyways. Throughout, throughout many, many years.
Oh, boy.
So I don't even know.
Uncollectible, or anything?
I'm not really sure.
See, that's a cheap subject, but if that petition, petition of Gary took out children, is there a timeframe we ask them to have all these signatures or just go on indefinitely to get some agency needed?
I would say, you know, it could, it can take some time. And as far as seeing it, remember we would have to have a special collection? I'm waiting to see what, exactly what the petition says.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
I'm not, I'm not sure they're being circulated properly, because if it's, let's say, legal petition, initiated measure and valid, it has to. You have to look at circulate position, she has to fill out portion, you have to go there, there's always that sort of thing. I think they'd be hanging it all over the place. They're not the one that's circulating the petition, that's not valid.
And I, and I did go over him, over that with him.
I don't know that, I'm just saying, I see signs on doors over there, the sign from here to that petition, who's the, who's the circulator?
Yeah.
And you have to leave a lane on the corner.
No, but there is a sign like, I know of Stillson, and it says, if you want to sign this petition, you need to go over to Congress, so.
I know, but whose name, is that person there? Was up to that, that person, just a lane or something, something.
Do you have to verify the issue register holders, that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's fairly circulating, I mean, if he gave me a petition to patch around, and you have to all the portion and go right there, who's the circulator? And you have to circulate, you can't say, Donald Davis on the corner, if anybody wants to sign, that was, I knew that.
And that's, that's just for initiated measure, you're saying?
Yeah, you leave, you leave out that.
Can't you petition?
No.
Okay, Tom.
You're the circulator.
Two years ago, there was petitions that were a candidate that, you know, were bad, were laying, you know, in a bar, you know, in the small towns. And so, yeah.
So look up on top, the guy at hand, and it better be. Position, the whole petition is.
How do you, how would you verify that, one way or another?
You just have to sign and say, who did this petition? They said, oh, he did, they're not.
Good plan, Don, you're stepping right up, Carlson says you got business meeting, road people. Steve keeps on his way.
I mean, just on the budget stuff, we did make the necessary changes that you've actually made on last week.
Okay.
So we did hand up the cash of five was a little less. The transfers out of the general fund to some of those funds got to be less. Because we do have to get it public on. But we do have, we do have chances throughout the whole month of September to make changes. And then those changes are just reflected in months. But we did take out all the letters.
This is what you guys sent to the newspaper?
Yeah, that you guys, well, we just did similar, and then we, we have combined some states.
Did you keep, did you keep the state's attorney budget as requested then?
Yeah, we did, we just did a little tweaking on it, I talked to Dylan. He had that money that we, that we gave out for, that we just did, you know, for that $4,500. We took that out of the waiting room, because it's not actually waiting, this is like. Yeah.
Yeah, so would you let him know that, that it's? That it's, that it's going through as, as requested?
As requested, okay.
Like, this load must have given peace of mind, huh?
Well, at least.
Yeah, exactly, absolutely ready.
But I know he, he did indicate this night, he, you know, that there, he had been talking to somebody. Because, that being not from my school. You know, that type of thing, so. Maybe there is a possibility that somebody wants to start out here.
It's a wonderful training ground, yeah.
My neighborhood.
Oh.
Or is it, is it a good neighborhood? I think, yeah, I live there.
I don't have your house.
Who's moving up there?
I just mentioned that if this particular development was looking for a house.
Oh.
House, you're saying, like us?
Oh.
Nothing, I had been watching the site to see if it was handy.
And that shook house never even hit the market, it sold.
Who's house?
Joel Evelyn Show.
Oh, really?
Never even hit the market.
And that's a teacher, you know, who's in there, and that was kind of.
I imagine it was 200 plus.
205.
205, yeah, okay, that's about right.
And the teacher and his sons are there, his wife and daughter are already at school. Being a school servant. And he, his dad actually graduated from there. Moving, HR, he was, graduated with 69. A little venue here.
We're dating there.
And he was a scientist. I mean, a scientist.
Established real house, he's there. And then the other one that she's talking about, six penny kitty corners, you're going on the, the player house. Mention that, 200 range.
Yeah, my hair toss is very close.
Does, does Craig Archer work with Falls?
No, he works for, for.
Oh, sure. Same answer, exit, we will. That's on water.
And he's the one that sold the quarter house, that.
See, Don, I'm going to give this to you, I just learned about a class action lawsuit that was brought against Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And if you would check with our insurance person to see if Roberts County is entitled to any kind of compensation on that, it gives a timeframe there individuals and organizations that belong
Okay.
to the health insurance company.
That's on my file.
Are you getting some off of that?
What are they violating?
I did, there was something on our emails regarding this.
What's that?
Yeah, and there was.
I can't tell you exactly what they did, it's just an announcement that, that they come to a mediation agreement, that they agreed to pay 2.6 million or something. I mean, so on their service area. Well, what's Tyler up to? Is he waiting?
Yeah, he's just talking to Mark, he's in Mark's office.
Talking to Mark? He was just talking to Mark, I know he is, yeah.
And I, I think there's things that you don't need to be done here first, before the treasurer's office.
Before the sheriff does the sale.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Look, there is statutes, there are statutes in law that they need to follow.
As long as they do. Jay, you're a good resource, right down the hall. I mean, I've been to one or two of his sales in the past, but seems to, seems to know the, know the way, yeah.
Tom, what can you share about any amounts of?
Well, not a whole lot, I just, what I have a second thing to mention, family is trying to start a little faster, like a different brand, kind of start my traffic, dirt started, ran late.
Good morning.
Morning. It's a pill of oxygen.
I told you it's starting to be a depression.
I sure.
Get run over by a tractor and lift a telephone.
But that's not Teddy.
Yeah.
All right, our jail census this morning is at 50. We brought six to, six to the pen last week, three females, three, three males, right at the end of the week. I just sent a message out to the to Gary Gackowski with the tribal police, and made him aware that we do have space if, if they have anything. We made him aware that we do have space if, if they have anything that comes up over the next couple of weeks. Uh, and we're also bringing in, going to be bringing in some marshals that are just waiting for the transport.
I suspect that the deal is trying to be short-lived because they're obviously in the bill, something like that. If we ever approached them about, you want to buy so many vets a day or month or whatever? But then maybe we're better off not doing that because then we just, we wouldn't be bringing in the marshals.
Yeah, that would probably be, that would probably be the thing. It sounds like the last, the last information that I got sounds like they're probably looking at starting, starting building next spring. Yeah, I was out there this weekend, just looking around, I didn't see any construction. Yes, so, uh, it's gotten, it's gotten kind of pushed back. So it sounds, sounds like preliminary, what their talks are, about twenty-five vets. And then in their first phase, and then whenever second phase starts, will be another twenty-five. So.
We can close it down, bring her up there.
I don't know if you want to do that, but I think the cost of doing that would be way more.
I did joke.
It'd be less heavy, maybe, sometimes, but...
Slightly more than eighty-five bucks a day, huh?
Yeah. Uh, a couple of new business things. I told, we worked with, uh, a company called Lexus Nexus on putting a contract together for us for federal, uh... Statute books, uh, court, court books for federal inmates. Because we just don't have the capability of having all of the federal laws and stuff available to them. So we're looking at a contract, a year-long contract with them where they will put it on our reliance telephone system. So they'll, inmates will have access to it right on their, their iPods if they already have access to, for about eighteen hundred dollars. And it saves us in a couple of areas, saves us from having to purchase any kind of books and putting them in a, putting them in our law library. And also saves us from having to transport inmates across the jail to go down there and use the law library and bring them back, and, you know, bring them back to court. They'll have access to those documents and things right on their, their iPod sensors.
What do we have up in the courthouse? Something on computer up there, what is that?
We have, we have the online document at the court report.
Those law books, I mean, was it the same thing he's talking about, or probably something?
Federal. Oh, federal, yeah, these are for federal. Primarily, yeah, primarily accessed by our federal inmates. Which just helps us keep them compliant with, with the federal, the marshals.
Sure, okay, I get you.
And, you know, I mentioned it last week, but we were one, we were about two or three of about ten jails that passed their compliance checks when they came around, their compliance, about two weeks ago. So they're going to be, they're planning on bringing more marshals, our correction.
I was going to say, you're at nine, and it looks like it's trending up.
Yeah. Yep, so right now, right now we have marshals in two separate pods. And we have, we have kind of the availability of bringing in all our ten or so. And I think that's the last time we get to visit with them. That's about what they plan on bringing, bringing our correction. So I think our clients will probably stick right on that twenty, that twenty mark to see how that goes. The only thing that tends to happen is the people that are there longer, they tend to get poor idle hands. And so, but the marshal service has always been really good with working with us. If we have, if we have any inmates that just can't handle it there with us, we give them a call. They're usually there within a week. They get that in, they out of there and get further on their way down, wherever is it. Uh, James is also working on looking at getting a quote for some additional cameras. As you can imagine, with a few less staff, having, getting some cameras in some certain areas that kind of alleviate some of the blind spots that they have in the, in that area. He's kind of working on, so we're just gonna, once we get that, we do have one that's out in our Sally Court area outside as the, as the cars are coming in through Sally Court's, the camera out there and now for years. They're also quoting us on getting that, so. Just partying through accurate control. So just as, just as kind of a, an overall safety issue, I guess. Other than that, uh, I do have some personnel, a couple of personnel things for executive session.
Your motion for that, executive session, we'll discuss it personnel. By Carlson, second by Johnson. All in favor, signify the same, our motion carries. You've got another hour to go, don't you?
Slough off or something. Why, Ed, will you marry?
You got to go get married.
Yeah. Been a single man too long.
Smart, yeah.
Girlfriend's pregnant, so.
Sure didn't have divorce, you can...
Why do I marry you?
Well, if we're done, we'll need a motion to adjourn then. Second by Zimble. All in favor, signify the same.
This livestream is brought to you by Court of Pawn and Thrift for all your chronic needs, countryside assistance, living and memory care. And Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time. Stillson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels. Tri-State Water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners that reverse osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.